Next to order, and the first item on the agenda is roll call.
I know they're here.
They're in the back.
Okay, the record will reflect that they're here but in the back and coming forward, I guess.
Everybody's here, they're getting them out of the...
It's like a rolling form.
All right, let's continue with business. Mr. Curry, do you have anything you'd like to have clarified on the consent calendar?
Uh, no.
Mr. Selich, welcome to our meeting.
I'm really not sitting on my knees. I have nothing.
Mr. Rosansky, you are looking quite short, aren't you?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Daniel, do you have anything that you'd like to have clarified on the consent calendar?
I don't, Mayor Webb.
There we go.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Well, welcome, welcome you could come. Well, you weren't sitting down.
Holy mackerel, this thing's way down. They did the same thing to you.
I want you to look up to your job.
That's gonna be hard. Mr. Nichols, do you have anything you'd like to have clarified on the consent calendar?
Okay, guys, let's bring it to order. Now, do you have a question that you want to ask the city manager at the present time?
The police chief's salary isn't a part of the agenda. What is a part of the agenda is with PERS, making sure that we get a waiver from PERS for him to work the first six months of the next calendar year.
Is the agreement the same as the words?
Yes, we entered into one agreement, we're not entering into another contract. His contract actually runs until June the 30th, so...
So that...
Doesn't change. In order to make that contract work, we need to get this waiver from PERS.
Okay.
Who wants you more than enough?
Thank you. Anybody else? This is your last chance? Fine. Item two is household hazardous waste bulk pickup, overview and options for additional services. I believe that's somebody from the General Services Department?
Yes, it is. Chris is going to give an overview on these two issues, so these are two separate issues, but council has asked about them in the past, so we thought that we would bind them together and come back with a report to the city council on household hazardous waste and what a program would look like if we implemented that service, and then the bulk item pickup, which a lot of residents would like to see on a regular basis.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
Is this thing booting up?
Is the computer on camera?
Yeah, it's on.
Ready to go earlier?
Oh, okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Chris Markarello, administrative analyst in General Services Department. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about household hazardous waste collection programs and bulk item collection programs. I'll review the household hazardous waste section, and then Mike Pizzani will review the bulk item collection program. What we'll talk about are the current programs that are available to City of Newport Beach residents. We'll talk about what some other cities are doing locally, and we'll talk about some options for enhancing our current services for Newport Beach residents. There are six categories of household hazardous waste. Those include household cleaners, automotive products, home maintenance and improvement products, yard and garden products, electronics, and miscellaneous items. Universal wastes are hazardous wastes that are more common and pose a lower risk to people and the environment than other types of hazardous waste. They include things like mercury thermometers and thermostats, batteries, fluorescent lamps, and non-empty aerosol cans. And in February of 2006, the state of California introduced new regulations that govern universal waste. The regulations require that all households in California must dispose of universal waste as a hazardous waste. Previous to that, people could just throw these materials in their garbage cans. These types of waste are generated by a wider variety of people than the typical business waste. And why is it important to divert these materials from the landfill? These items can end up getting into the groundwater or flowing into other water sources via storm drain runoff. They can cause contamination of the water and soil, and they can pose a significant health and safety risk to the public. The current household hazardous waste collection service for Newport Beach residents is through the County of Orange Hazardous Waste Collection Facilities. There are four locations in Orange County, in Irvine, Anaheim, Huntington Beach, and San Juan Capistrano. Those, they're open Tuesday through Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and they're free of charge to Orange County residents with proof of residency. These centers are managed and operated by the county's Integrated Waste Management Department, and users can bring up to 15 gallons or 125 pounds of HHW, household hazardous waste, per visit. The closest location for Newport Beach residents is in Irvine or in Huntington Beach at the Rainbow Disposal Facility.
Where's the one in Irvine?
It's off of Sand Canyon.
Which way from the five?
I believe it's north.
North of the five?
Or south, son.
And do... I don't know where you're going with your presentation, but do you have addresses and or maps on the web so people are aware?
Absolutely.
Okay.
This is a picture of our current way that we let people know hazardous waste can't be disposed of as trash. Currently, when our refuse division staff goes out and they sees, and they see an instance like this with computer monitors or paint cans stacked in a trash can, they'll issue a violation tag to help inform residents about HHW, so that also lists maps and telephone numbers where the people can get to the facilities. The tag lists out the types of items that are considered to be household hazardous waste, and it also explains why hazardous waste should be disposed of differently from trash.
What were those weights, again?
I'm sorry?
You had weights for what you can bring as household hazardous waste?
It was 15 gallons or 125 pounds in one visit. This slide shows some of the participation in the county facilities. We have approximately 550 residents per quarter that use the county collection facilities. And the General Services Department will get about 250 calls per quarter on household hazardous waste, so there are people wondering where I can get rid of the materials, and we'll direct them to the county facilities that are closest.
How do they know they're different?
When they'll go to the collection facility, they're required to fill out, or show proof of residence, and then fill out a small card just showing where their address is, name and information.
That's people's annual household waste.
Absolutely.
I think part of it is that they don't want commercial waste there. Like, if you're a business, it's just for residents.
I've been there many times myself, and they do make you fill out a card and let know where you're from.
So our refuse division staff will issue about 160 field notices, which is the last bar right there. And what we've noticed is with the recent universal waste regulations, we've seen a large increase in the number of field notices that we've issued. In the second quarter, April, May, and June of 2006, 189 notices were issued for the universal This next graph shows the breakdown of field incidents, and this is also quarterly. The most, the majority of field notices that are issued are for liquid household hazardous waste. Now, this is over a two-year period. The next most common are the electronic waste materials, things like computer monitors, stereos, fax machines, those types of materials. And then, like we talked about, the universal waste component is the newest and fastest-growing component of hazardous waste, and that's, the figure right there is over a three-month period, so it's an average over the first three months that the regulations were imposed. The chart right here shows what other cities are doing with their hazardous waste programs. Most local cities offer an additional HHW collection option in addition to the county program. The first option or program that you see right there is a one-day roundup program, and that's where residents can drop off all types of household hazardous waste. They're held at a designated location for one day, and they're usually done on an appointment basis to minimize the traffic impact and waiting time for people. The city will contract with a company to run the collection event and handle all the aspects of the collection. City staff will help with traffic control and marketing for the event. Now, these are great events. You're able to reach a lot of people in a short amount of time. One of the downsides, though, is that they're more infrequent. People will store a lot of materials in their garage over time, and let's say they go out on vacation on the day that the collection event is, they're not able to use it, and they have to wait till the next year or whenever the next event takes place. The next program over is for electronic waste roundups, and that's similar to the HHW waste roundup, except it's just for electronic materials. So it's all the similar components except just for electronic materials. The next program over is for a curbside or home pickup program, and that's where a city, the city contracts with a company to manage all aspects of the program. A resident has HHW, they'll call up the company. The company mails out a very heavy-duty plastic bag to the resident and schedules a pickup date. On that pickup date, the resident will put the materials inside the plastic bag, bundle the plastic bag, and put those out on their front doorstep for collection, and then the company will send somebody to pick up the materials and properly dispose of them. Most of the city...
Would that include e-waste?
Yes, it would.
So what if you had a TV, a computer, and a monitor?
Well, the bag, it's pretty big, and you can store up to 80 to 125 pounds in each bag, so if you weren't able to fit everything the first go-around, you could call them up and schedule another collection pickup. Most of the cities that offer this service offer a maximum of two pickups per household This slide shows the different collection options and estimated costs that we would pay if the City of Newport Beach wanted to enhance our collection services. The first option is for a one-day household hazardous waste roundup, and the estimated cost for that is $54,000. That's based on a 500-car event. If we had more cars that came through, then the cost would go up. At that event, people would be able to drop off all types of household hazardous waste, and the event would be held at the city yard. The next option is a curbside or home pickup program, and the estimated cost for that would be $192,000 for two pickups per household per year, and that contract amount is paid... Oh, excuse me. It's the most expensive option, but it's also very convenient for residents. It's the easiest method to get rid of their hazardous waste. The one downside...
Does that assume that every household uses the two pickups?
Yeah, that's what I was going to get to, is that the contract amount is paid regardless of whether each household in the city uses both of their pickups. So that's one of the, you know, if each, if half of the households in the city were only to use one pickup, you'd still be paying that $192,000. What a lot of cities will do is they'll start out with the budget amount for a year, and they'll see how demand is, and then as demand increases, they'll continue to ramp up their budget to meet the demand, eventually getting to two household pickups per year. The last option would be for a recycling collection center at the city yard. The estimated cost for that is $105,000. That includes funding for one new full-time staff member, the purchase of a bennet storage shed, which is shown in the picture right above. It also includes disposal costs, permits and fees, and program supplies to go along with the program. After evaluating the options, staff thinks that this is the best value of all the options. There wouldn't be any limits on the number of drop-offs that residents could drop off at the facility. This would be within the city limits, and it would be open year-round for residents to use. And the hours of operations that would work best would be Monday, or Monday through Friday afternoons, and then Saturday mornings when city operations aren't at their peak.
Are there any... You mentioned that the $105,000 includes the structure there.
Yes, sir.
Would the $105,000 be the same price for the second year?
Well, it would drop down. $10,000 was the estimated cost for the storage unit, so yeah, it would, yes, it would drop down to $95,000 for the second year.
I have to ask, is there any issues with residents transporting this type of waste in their own car?
Well, it would be the same requirements that residents currently face when they take their materials to a county facility. It would be the 15 gallons or 125 pound maximum limit per visit.
But they could visit five times a week?
Exactly. It would be open as many times as they need to use it.
What do we do with the materials once we accumulate it?
Well, if we find something, say at the end of the alley where people have left something off, we'll bring that, the materials into the city yard, and we have a contract with an environmental services company, and they'll do disposal services for us, I think, either once a week or once every other week to get rid of the materials.
Does that cost included in the $105,000?
Yes, it would be using the same company.
Can you offer a suggestion on how to dispose of batteries? I mean, everybody takes their AA and their Cs and Ds, and they just throw them in the trash. Other than education, I'm not sure there is any program unless you can tell me one.
Well, that would be inclusive in this program as well. What we...
But this is too inconvenient for, if I have two AA batteries, I'm not going to drive up to the yard, am I? That's a question.
But I think...
Of course, you would.
Yes, I would. Yes, I would.
I think part of that is public education, and if you have a bag in your garage where you put batteries and store them up until you're going to go there anyway, you know, and then you take the plastic bag along and it has nine batteries in it, and you also drop some other things. So I think through public education, you could change people's behavior that way.
Okay. I guess the only other question, it sounds crazy, but, you know, the, when the trash guy comes once a week, if he had a box up in the front where he could just take batteries, boy, it'd be, it'd be great. You know, I just, I know that's an added, little added, but, boy, that makes, you know, compliance would be infinitely easier if he had something like that.
Well, one of the other programs that staff has introduced in the past two or three months is we have battery boxes now at all the city facilities, so the library, here at City Hall, and the public facilities, so if people notice the battery boxes, they can come and safely dispose of them. So if they're going to a recreation center or to the library, they could drop them off on their way.
We have those now?
Yes, sir.
I didn't know about that.
I didn't either. Quite candidly, you need a better education on that, and maybe you need to put a couple battery boxes on the trucks when they pick up trash, so...
Hey, Chris, maybe in weekly update, we can profile those so newspapers can pick them up.
That's a very good idea.
Do they look like those little cigarette urns?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, but we didn't know.
That isn't as bad either.
If the council is interested in enhancing the HHW program, staff can pursue some different grant opportunities to help offset some of the financial impacts of starting a program. The California Waste Board has a few grants that are available. One's the Household Hazardous Waste Grant, and that's offered each spring, up to a maximum of $200,000, and usually they target specific programs. This past year, they targeted universal waste collection.
So that's what that box is? It looks, it looks like a, but I just want to, like, you know, it looks like a Girl Scout cookie box. You know, you need to make it look, you need to put a skeleton on there or something, because it really looks like a cookie box.
The HHW grant, it's offered each spring, and it's up to $200,000 for new programs, usually targeting specific markets, or, like I mentioned, the universal waste was a major push this past year. There's also the Used Oil Grant, which the city currently receives, and we could use part of that money to offset some of the costs for HHW pickup. Staff's recommendation is to start a permanent recycling collection facility at the city yard. After looking at the other options, it seems to be the best value for enhancing the services. It offers relative cost value, serving the most number of residents for the dollar amount. It's very convenient for residents. It would be open year-round. It's within the city limits, and it wouldn't be limited on the number of drop-offs. People could come as many times as they would need to. And if council supports the recommendation, staff can work on developing a program and with the goal of adding it into the General Services Department budget request for the next fiscal year, and hopefully starting a program next fiscal year.
Would that be open on Saturday as well as during the week?
Yes, sir. Saturday mornings and then weekday afternoons. And that is the conclusion of the household hazardous waste section. I can take any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Bulk items.
Mayor and members of the council, I'm going to talk about bulky item collection programs. In June, in public comments, a citizen inquired about bulky items and household hazardous waste, and Councilman Ridgeway urged us to take a look, so we've done so, and there are pictures of some of the bulky item issues out there in the alleys. We didn't stage these. They were just sitting there, we found them.
Is that Councilman Ridgeway's?
Is that a keg in the back? You know, they usually end up on the beach down on the peninsula, so...
Oh, for those that don't know me, I'm Mike Pizzani and the Deputy General Services Director. Yeah, frequently couches, if, you know, we don't collect them, just do end up on the beach, in beach bins or adjacent to them.
And then they, just a quickie, a friend, sometimes they go in the ocean, and a friend had a brand-new boat, he was in his 70s, and he hit a sofa going to Catalina.
Tide goes in and tide goes out. The typical types of items that we see are furniture, appliances, kegs. Furniture is generally tables, chairs, sofas, bookcases that are placed out there. We don't take them, they damage our trash trucks. The ones we do take are, we can take water heaters, we can take small couches, individual chairs, things that compact nicely without getting bent in the mechanism. Some of the problems, the reasons we have these, we have a highly transient population of renters, not necessarily transients, but in the summer months, you have weekly rentals. In the winter months, you have nine-month rentals, and along May and June, in areas such as Pablo Island and West Newport, people are moving out for the year. Additionally, just with the number of rentals within many areas of the city, people are on month-to-month or annual leases, and throughout the year are moving and leaving furniture. Single-family residents don't have issues such as this very often, but we do still find the single-family residential areas, people do have couches they want to get rid of, and currently, we don't collect them.
Mike, I appreciate that comment. I just want to remind everybody in the audience that I think it's like 42 or 44% of our current housing is apartments, so it's a very high number.
Again, currently, the types of items we do, except water heaters, small chairs, couches. We do not currently accept metal items, large couches, convertible sofas, which is one thing that we do find in a lot of the duplexes and triplexes along the beach, washers or dryers. There are private companies out there that will accept these items. These are fee-based services. There's a national company that's around in town, and there's some local ones that are hauling services that will take those, but...
Are they posted on the web, your website? I know you don't want to advertise, but they're impossible to find in the Yellow Pages. That's why I'm saying that.
I don't believe they are at this time on our website.
Okay. It might be a consideration, and you don't want to put one, I'd probably put two or three.
Right. Of the types of items that we do collect, we collect about 450 per quarter. Includes water heaters, small couches, tables. Get about 300 calls a quarter, about 100 a month, with people asking what to do with them, and we come across about another 300 stops like in the pictures where we tag and either tell the resident, or if the material stays there, we refer the management company or the property owner that they're on their own to get that taken care of. In surrounding cities, other cities do have bulky item pickups. Costa Mesa...
Maybe we should just take all our bulky items to Costa Mesa. Just kidding, to my friends in Costa Mesa.
In Costa Mesa, they cover the whole city over a four-week period each summer where everybody has one the second Tuesday or something where it's their day, and they can put out as much as they would like. In other parts of the year, they have a more traditional program where people can call and place out up to four items. Huntington Beach allows two pickups per year, one large item each pickup. Laguna Beach, Irvine, Lake Forest, it's four large items each pickup, maximum twice a year.
Do these cities maintain special trucks and equipment to be able to do that since we can't do it with our trucks, or...
Yes, and, you know, these are all written in, you know, these are all cities whose trash is picked up by private haulers, and, you know, they have, we get a little farther along, we'll discuss the types of trucks they use. We propose to implement a bulky item program similar to other cities. It would be two pickups per household per year. The collection would take place on the regular collection day. It would be on a reservation basis where, you know, they call our office, they tell us what they would like to dispose of. We tell them that we can take it or can't. There would be a quantity limit of four items per pickup, and we wouldn't just drive around areas looking for materials. We would have a specific set schedule for, say, Thursday where our people are going to go out and get these, 12 or 15 stops. Tell the residents they'd have to get it out at the curb or at the alley line. Tell the residents they'd have to get it out at the curb or at the alley line. Additionally, we would use refuse division staff supervision, code enforcement people when they come across examples like was in the photographs where people have just let this stuff accumulate between buildings, under staircases. Staff would have flyers to inform people of our program that, you know, if they get it out and they make the reservation, we'll take care of that, clean up some areas and Our proposed program, we have an estimate that would require one extra position. It would be a two-man crew that would work collecting these materials. We would take one out of our existing staff. Disposal costs for the materials would be approximately $10,000 a year. For many types of the, particularly the metal items we would collect, we would look at recycling options, be it source separating our yard, and all the washing machines, dryers, dishwashers, water heaters, get hauled off to a metal recycling facility at a substantially lower disposal cost or no cost. One of the things we still have to investigate, but those materials wouldn't have to go to a landfill.
How do these costs compare with the costs of using a private contractor for this specialized
There aren't, you know, we haven't gotten estimates from the traditional refuse companies that perform this type of work. I know it's anywhere from $100 to $200 per household when these smaller companies that do the collection come to people's houses, because after we tell them they need to call one of those companies, they call us back and say, you know, it's $200 is what they want for, to come and, you know, take my couch and washing machine. So we know that's a per-house charge. If we had a city program, I don't know, we haven't looked at what exactly, what it would For equipment, we would use a ton-and-a-half stake bed truck, which is similar to what commercial trash companies are using, something with a lift gate, so it can have a washing machine or dryer on a dolly, get it to the lift gate, put it in the truck and secure it, and transport it to the yard. Same thing with a couch or convertible sofa. And we estimate approximately $4,500 a year in outreach materials and advertising for an estimated startup cost of $45,000 for the truck and annual cost of $70,000 for the program itself. As for timing, we started discussing the program and thought about seeking to include it in our budget presentation for next year and include it in the fiscal '07, '08 budget. And as we discussed it further, we figure if we could, it's a kind of program we'd want to start in the spring to catch the nine-month renters in West Newport and Balboa Island moving out. So we, you know, were to have an option. And if it, you know, if this proposal is approved in concept by you this afternoon, we'd bring it back for a budget amendment for the position for the final three months of the year and for the purchase of the truck. So we get that ordered now. So, any questions?
I would just say, I'd like to see us compare the cost if we had a private vendor who did this service on a regular basis where it wasn't per-house but had the same kind of service characteristics we're proposing. So we could compare those costs before we made a final decision, otherwise, be fine. Thank you.
Yeah, first of all, I support a bulky item pickup. I agree with Councilmember Curry, maybe we should have a private sector person give the city a general bid that we...
Once a year or twice a year?
Well, that's up to council. I don't have a, I haven't gone that far in my thinking, but as compared to hiring one new hirerie and a new truck, but all the other cities are clearly providing bulky item pickup. Why we haven't, I'm not sure. We used to a long time ago, but at least if we could have you research a private sector entity that might get, that contract with the city.
The city's plan, though, would be on demand, though, right?
Right, a reservation basis. And actually, the, a private sector would also be the same either, you know, they call us, we set up for the contract and tell them to, you know, do these 15 stops a day, or they would provide the one, you'd have a number and keep track of it.
Yeah, but I mean, that's a little bit different than what Councilman Ridgeway was talking about, just a day or two days a year.
Right.
And that would be a different kind of a proposal, a different kind of a bid, I would imagine.
Yeah, this is much more convenient. Again, it's what most cities are doing through their trash haulers. It's pretty common practice in the industry.
Yeah, I didn't explain it very well. I mean, whatever is the least expensive, if you can do twice a year by private sector, which would coincide with something we would do as a city, I mean, I think we're wide open. I'm just trying to cut the cost down generally to the city, whatever it is. I'm not designing anything.
Does the annual cost that you had up there, that doesn't include the employee, does it?
Yes, it did.
It did include the employee?
Yeah. The, I believe it was approximately $55,000 a year plus $10,000 disposal plus about $5,000 in PR.
Okay, so could you recap for me then what the, what the startup cost is for both programs, and then what the annual cost would be after that?
Private sector versus state?
No, no, just on what you proposed today, on your, on the two options for both the hazardous waste and the bulk pickup.
Mike, why don't you give it for bulky pickup?
Yeah.
Chris can do it for hazardous waste.
For bulky was $45,000 startup, and that was really just the cost of a vehicle, and $70,000 a year ongoing.
And the cost to the person?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
Thousand dollars.
One question on the bulky pickup. I know that in my neighborhood, once a year, maybe twice a year, this is a number of years ago, they just had a huge bin that they dumped at the park for a weekend. And if it got full on one day, then they would empty it. If it got full on two days, how much does a program like that cost?
I don't know. We've never, the city never...
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, you did.
This is maybe 15 years ago or 20 years ago.
I know, doing staff cleanups in Buffalo Ranch, Cliff Haven, Balboa Island, we never put out bins. Associations always did.
It was a city bin.
It was a city.
Yeah, I'm sure that, that was, this goes back...
Because we don't have an association in our area.
About 1990.
But are we talking about citizens taking sofas and putting them into bins?
Well, they have doors that open, Homer. The great big bins, they have a double door that opens, and you can move them in there.
And it was a great way to collect hazardous waste, David. People threw that in the bin. That was a problem.
We're basically, for the two programs, we're talking about two positions, right? One for the hazardous waste program, and one for the bulky item pickup. Is there some way to maybe only create one position out of this? I mean, have bulky pickup in the morning and hazardous waste drop-off in the afternoon?
To get examined.
I mean, I don't know what kind of demand we're going to have for this. I imagine initially, you know, a lot of people will probably call up and say, I have couches or sofas or dishwashers or whatever, and there may be a big initial unloading of things, especially if they can get it done for free as opposed to having to pay.
Right.
But on an ongoing basis, I mean, has there been any assessment of what the actual need is? And I do perceive a need. I think it's a good thing, because it is a hassle to go to Huntington Beach to drop that stuff off. And most, I think most people probably just wrap it up in a dark trash bag and toss it in the trash anyway, and we wind up dealing with it in one form or another.
If we were looking at the proposed collection facility at the City Yard, we'd be looking at probably about 30 hours of open time per week where the residents could come in. So that would be, that's just to give you an idea for staffing, I mean, that would be a pretty significant amount of their time would be spent dealing with residents, and then any additional cleanup time or storage time, packing away materials or dealing with the disposal service. That would probably be a little bit of additional time on top of those 30 hours.
Maybe it's a Monday, Wednesday, Friday drop-off or something. You know, I'm just, we're very sensitive to adding positions, so maybe when you go back and crunch the numbers on this or talk to the private sector, you'll take into account that maybe, and maybe if it's wildly successful and we need that many people and we're, you know, performing that great of a service, it would justify it, but maybe it's much easier to add positions than it is to subtract them.
I would probably remind council that certainly in the springtime or end of summer, we're doing bulky item pickup anyhow significantly, you know, anyhow on the peninsula. So there's quite a bit of time and effort going into that project today.
Okay, we're getting back to my question, if we can. What was, what was the startup cost for the hazardous waste program?
That would be $105,000 to start up.
Then what's the annual cost?
$95,000.
$95,000. Then how many, how many households are we going to be serving with that?
There wouldn't be a limit on the number of drop-offs that residents would be able to make.
But, but let's, let's put it this way to get where my logic's going. How many households do you service, residential households do you service in the city?
We're about $38,000.
Thirty-eight thousand?
That's inclusive of apartments.
Right. $38,000? Okay. Thank you.
No, I'm sorry, but did I say 38, 38? Yeah, 38,000. I'm sorry, it's like 38,000.
Thirty-eight, that's...
Yeah, I'm sorry, that, I was, I stand corrected. And the larger apartments have their own trash pickup. Duplexes and triplexes do not.
With city forces, we collect from about 28,000 residential units in the city, and upward, Waste Management collects from between Benita Canyon and Newport Coast about 4,500 single-family homes in the city. And the rest are large apartments that use commercial service and condominiums. Waste Management does offer the bulky item collection to the Newport Coast area and Benita Canyon.
Is there a charge to that?
No, it's included in the contract. It's what they do with all their municipal contracts as...
Do you do it once a year, twice a year, or any time?
They, it's a reservation basis. They get up to four items twice a year they can call.
Well, it just seems that it's going to cost about roughly around five bucks a household for startup cost, and five bucks a year per household seems like it would be awfully hard for a private company to compete with that.
I mean, I'm sure when they calculate the cost, they're not figuring that every household's going to call and have a sofa or something picked up, so there's probably, realistically, probably to pick up a couch, it's 20, 30 bucks, really think about an item, but still significantly less than a couple hundred to have a, you know, hauling guy come out and pick up a few things, so correct.
Would we consider, and this is again for council, perhaps on a bulky item or these kind of things, maybe a, don't get me wrong, but a five or $10 charge to come out, certainly on a reservation?
And, you know, actually, they, you know, if you buy a refrigerator, they give you, I've done in the past, they give you a card and it's a number you call, and you stick a $10 check or cash or whatever inside the refrigerator. When they come pick it up, they take the $10, and that's the charge. And, I mean, it's cheap money when it comes to getting rid of something like that, so...
Yeah, bulky items, it might make sense to do a bulky item just to, just to defray the cost.
The grant monies that you were talking about, was that just one-time grants for, like, establishing the programs, or is that an ongoing?
Yes, the city would be, after the grant period, would be expected to sustain the program.
So we may be able to defray some of these startup costs.
Exactly.
Good. Thank you.
I think we should apply for grants, get the money we can.
But I think we would have to show, define what our program was as part of the grant application. Any other questions for the council? Anybody from the audience would like to ask any questions?
I just want to say Louise was the one that pushed me, and I'm glad you're here.
I want to compliment you on your shirt.
Thank you. I'm Louise Funenburg. I live on the Balboa Peninsula, and I want to thank the council for bringing this forward because it's something that needs to be. As I listened, I got to thinking, even if you had only Saturday morning for hazardous waste at the yard, that would alleviate a lot of the problems people have. If you only had it one day a week, then the little old ladies don't have to go to Huntington Beach and get lost. But the, you know, the program here, he's got five days a week or something like that. I'm not sure that we need that many days, but I haven't checked everybody else's hazardous waste. I did have a question for the young man. He's had bulbs. Is that light bulbs?
Fluorescent light bulbs.
Fluorescent light bulbs. Because I would like to write in our community paper some information about this in the little boxes that we can put our batteries in, so we'll try to get that one correct. But I appreciate that. Now, bulky items, if you could do it one day a week, or have them bring it to the yard, and, and have it toted from the yard would be of help. Of course, I don't know how many renters moving out wish to move their sofas up to the yard, but that's another question, so I won't take up any more of your time.
They don't. They leave it for the landlord.
They just leave it in the alley. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Ridgeway.
Okay, I was just going to say, these guys aren't used to study sessions where we just make recommendations and not vote on anything. I certainly would recommend looking at variations of these programs as suggested by all the questions that were here today. I think it's important for our citizens, and again, all the other cities are doing it. I'm just, I was happy to see you did those comparisons. That was good information.
Well, and I think one reason why we don't do them, and maybe other cities do, is because they charge for refuse pickup anyway. So it's easy for them to add a bulky item or household hazardous waste item on their fee.
That's a point well-taken, but I did suggest on bulky items, perhaps a defer, deferral or a defraying of the cost by, you know, how many people would use it and just make, we can look at it, that's all.
Heard a lot of good things. I wouldn't support more fees to our residents, though. I think they pay a lot in tax.
That's a good Republican comment.
Well, it's an optional fee, though. They can choose to use the service or not. It's not like we're going to force them to pay the fee. They, you know, they can dispose of it any way they want.
Let me say, I would gladly pay that fee to get some of the big stuff taken away.
You know what?
No problem.
I would pay the fee to get the couch, I mean, or the bed and the dishwasher that my neighbor's been storing between the building for the last three weeks, so...
I would too. I would pay for my neighbors, no doubt about it.
All right, neighbors, of Mr. Ridgeway and Mr. Rosansky, you can...
Maybe we can have block wine, block wine fees.
Anybody else wish to comment? I think that, do you have sufficient guidance? All right. The next item on our agenda is an item that, at least in our campaign, we've been said to have not had disaster preparedness, and I know that we do. We have an excellent program that the Fire Department has put together, and I'd like you to tell us about it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. I'm Tim Riley, the Fire Chief, and I'm very pleased to come here today and just provide you some brief additional information on what we've been doing since you've shown such tremendous interest in disaster preparedness in the city of Newport Beach. I just take you back that, you know, over the last one year, there was some concern about what happened with the city and the city's response, their ability to communicate with its residents following the tsunami that did not exist in Newport Beach, but everybody thought was going to happen. And additionally, we've talked a little bit about the ability to increase the outreach that we have to our citizens on how they can best be prepared to prepare in advance of a disaster, what to do during a disaster while it's occurring, and then what to do afterwards. So today, we've actually brought you two different speakers from my staff, an opportunity for you to actually see them, the public to actually see them as well. The first speaker before you is going to be Matt Brisboy. Matt is our new Community Preparedness Coordinator. This is the position that you authorized earlier this year, and we talked a lot about the focus for this position really being about community education and community involvement. really being about community education and community involvement, and so that's been his marching orders. As you know, this week, we hit the street with our new disaster preparedness mailer to all residents in the city.
Got mine today.
Fabulous document, it was well-prepared, you all had it in advance, so you knew what was going to happen.
I got one in the mail today.
And we're already getting a lot of phone calls already and it's just hit the streets today. So we anticipate that we're going to be overwhelmed over the next couple of days. We got the disaster preparedness hotline set up to take care of them because we know what we're going to get hit with. In addition to that, that really points to some of the things that we've been working on in the city as far as our own preparedness, community preparedness, our tsunami readiness, and the additional ways residents and now businesses can get information on how they can improve their disaster preparedness. So Matt's going to talk about our community preparedness efforts and you'll get to meet him and find out what he's been up to. And then we're going to have Katie Freeman talk to you, Katie is our emergency services coordinator. And Katie really is kind of the point person on all of our disaster preparedness efforts that are coordinated throughout the entire city. She focuses now principally on city readiness, city employee residence readiness, our plans, not only our huge master overarching plan, but specific hazard type of plans. She's going to talk to you a little bit about what we've been doing in the realm of citywide disaster preparedness, especially focusing on tsunami readiness and provides you some information on what we can do to finally be recognized by the National Weather Service as a tsunami-ready city. So she's going to talk to you about that. And then will all three be available for any additional questions or concerns you may have about how we're doing and making sure our city is prepared should a disaster strike our citizens? So I'd like to now introduce to you our new community preparedness coordinator, who's going to talk to you about our efforts out in the city today, Matt Brisboy. Matt?
Thank you, Chief Riley, and welcome, council, thank you for having me come and speak. Before I start, I'd just like to give a brief background about myself. I've been a city employee here since nineteen ninety-six. I started as a seasonal ocean lifeguard and most recently I was in the junior lifeguard program with Remy Boyer and applied for this position, the chief thought it was time to hang up the board shorts and come down and start getting serious about a new career here in the city. And so I'm real excited that he gave me this opportunity. And I like to joke with him and say that I'm not teaching the kids anymore and now I'm teaching all the adults in this city how to be prepared for a disaster. So I'm really excited about this new opportunity. As a community preparedness coordinator, my primary responsibility is all the community outreach programs here within the fire department. So I'm really the person that goes out and gives all the public presentations to any requesting group in the city. And today, I'm going to briefly go over kind of the three levels of presentations that I offer to residents within this city. Thing that we just mentioned, that the thing that we're really, really proud of here that we just is hitting the ground this week in waves to all the residents is our disaster preparedness mailer. I have extra copies of these if you'd like to get, receive one. In the disaster preparedness mailer, all residents are kind of going to learn about what to do before, during and after a disaster. We have things about how to create a disaster supply kit, about our tsunami rules, which Katie will be coming up and speaking about, as well as about the fire department training opportunities for residents, and those are what I'm going to be speaking about today. The first, the three basic presentations that I offer here in the city are the basic disaster preparedness presentation, the neighborhood disaster preparedness course, which was just recently created, as well as the community emergency response team. These are the three primary focuses that I have here within the city. The basic disaster preparedness presentation is the most commonly requested presentation we get here in the fire department and that's basically to come out to groups and give anywhere between a fifteen-minute to a one-hour presentation on basic disaster preparedness measures. What I do for these presentations is depending upon the group, I try to tailor the presentation to fit their needs. Recently, some of the groups that I've given presentations to have been the Newport Nautical Museum, the Corona Damar Homeowners Association, the Crystal Cove Homeowners Association is another one. These are just the bare bones, this is what the city has to offer, this is the disasters that affect Newport, these are measures you can take within your own house and these are some of the things the city has done. The next level of presentation, and this is something that Chief Riley wanted me to create when I came on the job, is to have something else that we could offer citizens, a, a next level perhaps in terms of our presentation model. So what I've been creating over the last several months is the neighborhood disaster preparedness course. Our target audience for this class are the hundred and sixty-five homeowners associations within the city, as well as any civic group within the city. This course is a three-hour course or a six-hour course, depending upon what the group is requesting. And for the course, I'll come in, the course is free of charge to any requesting group and I basically give, you know, a real detailed explanation of all of the disasters, what the city's doing, what they can, as residents, can do, and I'm really trying to sell them on joining our CERT program and going to the community emergency response team, which is the next thing I'll be talking about. Right now, I have three of these scheduled, one in the Corona Damar Homeowners Association, one with Crystal Cove and one with Bayside Village, which is, so those are the three that I'll be giving in November. The program that we're really proud of here in Newport, and it's been really great that the council has been very supportive of this program, is our community emergency response team. Since its inception in two thousand, we've had about five hundred residents go through the program. We have a little over three hundred residents within the city that are certified as federal disaster service workers. The program is a twenty-four hour FEMA-recognized program to certify residents as disaster service workers. I think if we learned anything with the most recent Katrina disaster is that the fire department and the police department are going to need additional help and resources in the event of a large disaster. And within Newport Beach, I think we have a very strong community base that can come in and assist both departments in need. The course is free of charge to all residents, we're currently about halfway through our fall class. The class is filled with about forty participants. Some of the course topics include introduction to disaster preparedness, first aid and CPR, light search and rescue, and disaster psychology. We utilize members of the fire and police department who have expertise in these areas to come in and assist in teaching these classes. And I think with the citywide mailer coming out, we've already getting, we're already getting flooded, so our winter class is going to fill up quite quickly and hopefully if it does fill up, we'll be able to create another class to offer, so we don't have to turn away any residents that want to become members of our CERT team.
Do other cities have CERT classes?
Yes, they do.
How prevalent is that within the county?
There's eight, eight cities within the county, within Orange County that have CERT programs. Huntington Beach, Anaheim, Garden Grove, Santa Ana, Irvine.
It's good now.
Yeah, so there are, but not every city within the county offers it. Our program is available only to Newport Beach residents or people that work within the city of Newport. If we, if our class isn't full and there's residents, we get a lot of people from Laguna and other cities calling. If we have space available for them, we do allow them to take the class. However, it's primarily focused on Newport Beach residents. Some of the, my future projects and some of the things that I'm really involved with are continuing to expand the CERT program. I, I would love to see the program really have a huge number of residents and really get everyone involved so that we have a large base of people that we can call upon in the event of a disaster. And having these people organized within their community, I think will be an invaluable service to the city if we are to suffer a major disaster. Marketing and teaching the neighborhood disaster preparedness course, hopefully over the next two or three years, I'll be able to go in and give the neighborhood course to as many homeowners associations as possible so that people within the community will be further prepared. And right now, I'm trying to, in the process of beginning to develop a business disaster program, which would be similar to the neighborhood class, but it would be specifically tailored to businesses within the community. So those are some of my future projects and things that I'm doing and I'm really excited to be on and it's, it's good to be here and I thank you for the opportunity of creating this position and things. Are there any further questions for me or?
Welcome aboard the educational program. Anybody have any questions of Matt?
If you need, if, I have about ten of these extra of the disaster preparedness mailers.
Why don't you hand them up?
Up and up and up.
Thank you.
Katie, are you next?
So, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Katie Freeman, I'm the emergency services coordinator. We'll try to tell you a little bit of the differences between Matt's position and my position. Prior to getting Matt on board, I was doing the city preparedness efforts internally and externally. So it's great to have Matt on board as another person to get the word out about our disaster preparedness outreach efforts. A little bit of background about myself, I was hired as an administrative analyst in two thousand and four. Prior to that, I worked for the city of Huntington Beach, I was in their emergency services program. So I was hired in two thousand and four as an emerg, or as an administrative analyst and I was kind of in training, so to speak, for two years. I was recently promoted to the emergency services coordinator, very recently, September thirtieth of this year. So as the emergency services coordinator, I am responsible for all the city planning, training, any exercises and any internal and external training that the city does. I'm also responsible for any grants related to emergency preparedness. In our city's disaster preparedness, we have an emergency operations center drill, so, or an EOC drill every year, so that's annually. Each year, we try to focus on a different hazard. Some of the hazards that we've done in the past are fire, flood, a major earthquake, and the recent disaster we drilled on was a tsunami. Also in the city, we also have an emergency management plan. It, it includes an all hazards approach to dealing with disasters. All functions utilizing the incident command system and the national incident management system is included in the plan. All response, all response organizations internally and externally, so we list the county and FEMA and their responsibilities to us in a disaster. It basically states how the city will operate in a disaster. Every department has a copy of the plan, we train on the plan annually using our drills and also training on individual sections for each department. The plan is updated every three years, our next update is in two thousand and seven and our plan is online on the city's website for anyone to view and we also welcome residents to view our plan and to know what we're going to do in a disaster and what we plan on doing during any disaster. Also, part of my job is to ensure employees meet all federal and state training requirements. Just recently, eight hundred and twenty-five full-time employees completed a federal requirement, which was that we all had to pass the national incident management system. We had to take several courses and complete those requirements. So eight hundred and twenty-five employees just finished those requirements and it better prepares us to work as a city during a disaster and work with any county or federal or state agency. In the city also, we have monthly training for all new city employees. Every time a city employee is hired, we have an orientation for them, explaining to them that as a government employee, they are disaster service workers and they do have a responsibility in a disaster because they are employed by a government agency. During this training, we also teach them what the city's role is in a disaster and also basic disaster preparedness efforts, so that city employees are able to come to work in a disaster and that they have already pre-planned for their families. And so they have their mind at ease and they can come work for the city to deal with a disaster. Also in the city, we have an emergency preparedness committee. The goal of the emergency preparedness committee is to provide information, tools, solutions in the form to solve problems or any issues resulting from emergencies. This committee has a representative from every department, this committee meets monthly. The committee helps to plan any emergency operations center drills, any updates to the plans, any updates of emergency or disaster preparedness information that we want to get out to every department. So there's a representative from every department and they're responsible to take any updated information back to their department to share with everyone else. Okay, kind of branching to a, a different topic, I was asked to speak on the tsunami warning that occurred last year. It occurred June fourteenth, two thousand and five. What happened was an earthquake occurred ninety miles off the coast of Crescent City. The tsunami warning center issued a standard tsunami warning to the California coast. It was due to the magnitude of an earthquake. Anytime that an earthquake is generated and it's over a certain magnitude, a standard tsunami warning is issued. It was basically a non-event, no tsunami wave was generated, but the tsunami warning center does send out these messages just in case. For the first thirty minutes, they are not sure if a wave was generated, so they send out these warnings as precautionary measures. So on that night, over the television on the emergency alert system, residents were notified all along the state of California that a tsunami had been generated. That night, the police dispatch received over six hundred calls from concerned residents in the low-lying areas wanting to know what they should do if a tsunami was in fact coming. The lifeguards, they cleared the beaches as a precautionary measure, so that's what we did on that night of June fourteenth, two thousand and five. In response to that tsunami warning, we got all of the public safety departments together and we figured out how best to handle a tsunami warning or a tsunami event in the future. So a tsunami incident action plan was created and in that plan, it includes the response for the first twelve hours of a tsunami warning. So it's the first operational period, what we're going to do in the first twelve hours if a tsunami were to occur. In that plan is instructions on how the city will receive the tsunami warning, how public safety and key personnel will respond, so whether it's the police department evacuating residents and homes, alerting and warning the public through our public information officer, or sheltering residents at any of our pre-designated shelter sites, it's all included in the plan. What's also included in the plan is maps of evacuation routes that we have pre-designated for residents to exit the city, inundation areas, which list all the low-lying areas in the city. Basically, it's any area that's below a hundred feet in elevation. And any, also listed in the plan is employee inbound routes. What we discovered that night is if everybody is going to be leaving the city and if people, city employees have to respond back to the city, how will they get in while everybody is getting out? So we have focused our efforts on planning for these types of events and they are all listed in the plan. The plan was tested, we had a tsunami tabletop exercise on May fourth of this year to test the plan. Many corrections were noted and included from that drill and have now been added to the plan. So we do have this plan, this plan is, it will be distributed to all the departments, responding departments, so everybody knows what to do during a tsunami warning. That leads us to the tsunami-ready program. The tsunami-ready program is, is by the National Weather Service initiative. It basically promotes tsunami hazardous, hazard preparedness as an active collaboration between the federal, state and local emergency management agencies. It supports better and more consistent tsunami awareness mitigation efforts among communities at risk. The main goal is to improve, improve public safety during tsunami emergencies and also to get the community's awareness of living in a coastal city, that we do have a threat of a tsunami and being aware of that. So what makes a community tsunami-ready according to the National Weather Service? We have to establish an emergency operations center, which we have, it's over in our police station off of Santa Barbara. Ability to disseminate a tsunami warning, we do not have sirens in the city of Newport, but we would use our local media to get the word out. We would have the police department use all means necessary, whether it's canvassing neighborhoods, using Eagle, the helicopter, to get the word out to residents that they would need to evacuate in a tsunami event. We also have created, like I just talked about, the tsunami hazard plan, community awareness program. Inside the disaster mailer that got mailed out to all residents is a piece on there about tsunami safety rules. So that is part of our education for residents that we included in the disaster preparedness mailer. Multiple ways to receive the National Weather Service tsunami warnings. Through the police department, they receive the warnings through the Colette's teletype system. We have an email system and a fax system also, that we receive any kind of tsunami warnings or any type of threats or large earthquakes that occur around our area. We also have purchased NOAA weather radios in all eight of our fire stations, as well as lifeguard headquarters and our emergency operations center, we have weather radios that would go off during a tsunami or any type of water event to prepare us and to let us know in advance that this is going on. What we don't have and what we lack currently is, to make us a tsunami-ready city, the National Weather Service requires us to put signs on our evacuation routes and our beaches. And I'll show you what those signs look like. These, there's two types of signs that we're interested in putting up. This is the tsunami hazard zone, so these would go on our beaches. It would be eleven signs total on our beaches. They would be placed near our lifeguard towers, on the telephone pole there, they would be placed. They're basically placed every three-quarters of a mile, so it's every other lifeguard tower, they'd be placed on the beaches. This would be on our tsunami evacuation routes, like I talked about in the plan, we have predetermined evacuation routes, Superior, Newport Boulevard, Jamboree, MacArthur, Margery and Newport Coast. We would put these signs along those routes, so there would be twenty-one signs total. And they also follow the three-quarters of a mile rule. So let me show you the map, so this is what the map would look like and I know it's kind of hard to see. The As are for the hazard zone that would go on the beaches and the Bs are the evacuation route signs on the routes we just talked about. The routes go all the way two miles inland, which is. The routes go all the way two miles inland, which is recommended by the National Weather Service. So, that's how we have placed our signs on all the routes and the beaches.
Why don't we utilize Booker Street?
Why do we, is that what you're saying?
Do not.
Because Huntington Beach would be the design.
Because it's Huntington Beach.
Well, we've got them going up in Costa Mesa, don't we? They're off of...
That was proposed, that that is two miles inland would be the city of Costa Mesa. Two miles would be in the city of Costa Mesa, but that would be up to Costa Mesa to decide if they wanted to put that sign up.
No, I mean, why are we not showing a route that would take you out Booker Street as well?
Through our plans, through our planning efforts, we've been planning with all coastal cities in Orange County, Huntington Beach and Laguna Beach, and we have decided to send our populations up these routes and not to send them to other cities to kind of alleviate some of the traffic. We understand in Newport that some people...
You're just looking to contain it within the city. Okay. Thank you.
Probably there will be signs on that road.
I'm going up Booker Street myself. Sorry. Huntington Beach, here I come. That's the quickest way out.
If I were you, I would go up the Superior Route because you're going to get to higher elevation faster than you will in Huntington Beach.
Yeah, but the traffic that's going to be going up there is going to be quite...
I have a question. How did you pick the elevation one hundred?
I didn't pick the elevation. That is the standards that the National Weather Service gives us.
Even though the chances of getting something that high is probably a millionth of a percent in this area?
I think it's not only the water is the concern, I think it's also the debris as well. So, they have chosen a hundred feet in elevation to have residents evacuate up to that and higher.
Okay, so that would, probably Newport Harbor High School is in that zone then?
It would be out of that zone because they are high enough in elevation.
I don't think they're a hundred, but, okay. Let's look at the topo maps.
And also, I might mention that the tsunami-ready program, it has been adopted by all coastal cities in Orange County. The goal is to, for all cities, all coastal cities in Orange County to be a tsunami-ready city by the December twenty-sixth anniversary of the Sumatra tsunami. So, that is the goal.
Any questions from the city council?
How would this...
There's a cliff over there in Corona del Mar.
You know, I'd have to get an elevation map. That's right, we do have inundation maps, but we don't have them to display for you. But that is included in our tsunami plan. But I believe they are high, it is high enough in Corona del Mar.
I looked at topo maps years ago, dealing with the banners, the planes flying, and the cliffs I know along Corona del Mar State Beach were about two hundred.
No.
Yeah?
No way. They're closer to fifty to sixty feet, or thirty, thirty to fifty feet.
Corona, no, I'm sorry, Crystal Cove State Beach. Is that about...
I see an office pool coming up. I beg to differ with you. I know that they're...
There's a thirty-foot house as well out on the cliff.
Yeah. Forty-five. Okay, Mr. Curry.
Katie, so our schedule for the deployment of these signs is sometime before the twenty-sixth of December of this year. Is that correct?
Yes, we're hoping with your approval today that we can go ahead and order the signs, and then Public Works and General Services will be placing the signs on light poles on the evacuation routes.
All right, so really, within ninety days, we'll have the signs up and deployed.
Correct.
Let me ask a question. You talked about the fact that we don't have an air raid type system. I was in San Francisco when the air raids horn went off the other day. Is it thought that we need that, or do we believe that we have adequate warning facilities to our current assets?
It has been brought up in past discussions with council. We have priced out the sirens. They range, there's a wide range how much the sirens would cost. Some cities have chosen just to do sirens on the coast for tsunamis only. Cities like Huntington Beach, they have sirens all over the city, and they use them not only for tsunamis, but for any disaster. So, the prices range from about two hundred and fifty thousand up to a million dollars.
Okay. And the question's been raised that we don't have an adequate strategy currently to evacuate the peninsula, particularly the schoolchildren on the peninsula in the event of a tsunami event. Can you or Chief Riley sort of just walk through the scenario of how we would go about doing that in the event that a tsunami occurred today?
That's one of the, I'd say, fallacies that most people have about the city's ability to evacuate everybody. If you think about what the population is, they're particularly daytime for schoolchildren. The fact that they think that we're going to have a plan that's going to get everybody off in a fraction of the amount of time it would take them without an emergency is kind of ludicrous. One of the things that we do suggest is twofold. One is, we work all the time with Newport-Mason Unified School District and our schools for them to develop plans to do that. It's really their responsibility to be prepared to either shelter their children in place or prepare for their evacuation. If we think about the ability to get buses or any other type of transportation vice down to the peninsula in any emergency and get them off in any amount of time, it's probably pretty hard to believe we can get that done. So, one is, the school districts have to recognize what their capabilities are, because we certainly don't have the capabilities, and then plan accordingly. So, shelter in place, teach them how to withstand those types of events, teach them how to get to higher ground without thinking that we're going to be responsible for their evacuation. Then the second part is community education, which is part of the reason we have MAT aboard and part of the reason the tsunami information is in there. It's kind of why the signs say, not if you hear a sire and go to higher ground, but if you see an earthquake, go to higher ground, because it really talks about understanding and what to do during a disaster. I mean, quite literally, we are going to be overwhelmed should this occur. The best thing we can do is provide people the earliest notification possible, and hopefully they will be trained, prepared, and ready to evacuate. Chances are, they won't be, and then we'll deal with that accordingly. But I'm not here to tell you that we have a plan that's going to evacuate all the people off the peninsula in thirty minutes or less should we have a tsunami warning. I'm just not here to tell you we can do that.
But you are confident we could notify all the people on the peninsula within an adequate time so that they can make their own...
That was, there's two components of notification. Actually, there's three components. One is the amount of time we have for notification. If it is an early warning tsunami warning, like a potential tsunami situation like we had with the Crescent City earthquake, we do have ample time to notify people. So, then it's our responsibility to utilize the pieces that we have available, and sirens may be one of those tools. We're still trying to see if there's some grant funds available to assist us in identifying whether we want to put a siren system or not. But right now, we're not ready yet to come forward with a proposal that says this is the best way to provide a siren system. But I think that's one of the tools. Should we decide to do that, obviously, again, another concerted public education campaign is essential so when people hear it, they know what to do. Okay? The second thing is education, which is why MAT's here. If we have a local tsunami, which means we have an earthquake slip or some sort of a land slip off the coast near us, you know, I'm saying within fifty miles of us, there's not going to be any time if the tsunami's generated. So, they need to be able to understand what to do immediately to protect themselves until the tsunami has passed. So, there's a whole issue of a combination of notification, giving good direction, and then also educating the public. And we really think that that's the focus we want to work on right now, is letting them know upfront what to do should it occur, and letting them know what to do in their homes if they're caught. And we're still working on how we're going to come up with some way to notify them in better means. But we don't think that developing, I mean, we can't just stack, you know, five hundred buses down the peninsula waiting for a tsunami. It's just impractical.
In terms of our community education, this is great stuff, the flyers, now we're going to have programs, multi-level, you know. What about as far as the internet, because we have now our video streaming? What are we looking at in terms of letting the public know about these kinds of things on the internet of the city?
Well, we have some internet capabilities, but I don't personally believe that our department website is very robust. So, that's one of the issues we just had a discussion on, is really kind of taking a look at how we can retool our website to be a better public education tool. I think you look at some of the things you find on our website, they're excellent, some of them are not there. So, I think that's a major issue for our department, is to really look at what do we want to do website-wise to make it, because it is becoming, with video streaming particularly, the information we have here, it's really becoming an excellent way to get the message out to today's more advanced computer users, but we're not set up to do that. And so, as you know, we did just recently fill our fire information systems manager position, or coordinator position, after he gets focused on coming up to speed on all our essential department applications. That's one of our top projects, the website. But I'm here to tell you, I just don't think that what we have today is ready to do that. But it's on the horizon. It's a very important tool.
Where do tsunamis rank in statistical probability of other disasters, particularly of a major flood that would overwhelm the flood control system, like, what is a five-hundred-year flood, whatever it is overwhelms our flood protection?
A few years back, the city, the fire department led the charge for the city to develop a hazard analysis for the city of Newport Beach, and tsunami was very low in probability. I think it was like, I think we had thirteen dramatic scenarios. I think it was like number eleven. So, it was very low. So, while we talk about putting a lot of effort into tsunami readiness, there's so many other things that we're putting a lot of effort into as well. Tsunami just happened to be very prevalent in everybody's mind after the Sumatra tsunami and then the little scare we had, so. And it's good that we've done what we've done. It's nice because Katie talked briefly about the tsunami action plan. We have our general emergency management plan, which is considered an all-hazards plan, but we're just now starting to drill down and develop hazard-specific response plans for the first, we call it twelve-hour or first operational period. And the tsunami incident action plan was the first one we did, and it really has developed a great model for us to exercise different hazard types and a model for us to develop other ones. And so, our next one we're going to do is an earthquake scenario, which is a very high probability comparatively.
Well, water is water. Would a flood hazard plan be similar to the tsunami plan for...
I think what, the only, what would look different is evacuation and inundation areas.
Okay, why don't we open it up to the public? Any public, anybody want to comment? Okay, let's close that. So, thank you for the report, Katie, Matt, and Chief.
So, Katie, just to make sure that we will be officially recognized as a tsunami-ready city whenever the signs go up, and we expect that that will be before the end of this year.
Yes, and we'll come back to council. National Weather Service would like to do a presentation officially recognizing the city of Newport Beach as a tsunami-ready city. Thank you.
Okay, it looks like our next presentation is on issues facing Upper Newport Bay and the Back Bay Science Center. Is that something you're going to educate us about, Dave?
Yes, Mayor Protam Rosansky. I need about thirty seconds to boot up the program.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protam and council members, this is a presentation, I've just entitled, Issues Facing Upper Newport Bay and the Back Bay Science Center. And the reason it's here is because you, as a council, received a letter on September seventh from the Newport Bay Naturalists and Friends. So, I'm going to identify what was in that letter for you, and then talk about a couple of other things that I think may be of interest to you and to the public, including the Department of Fish and Game and their reserve manager position, some programs at the Back Bay Science Center, and then how could or should the city respond to that letter? And this is kind of a summary of those issues that the naturalists raised. So, in the naturalist's letter, which is in your packets, it's towards the back after the draft PowerPoint presentation, they asked a couple of questions about the future staffing at the Back Bay Science Center and wanted to make sure that the programs would be collaborative, in other words, that would involve both the city, the county, Department of Fish and Game, the Coastal Commission, and the naturalists as a whole. They asked some specific questions about the research, the educational programs at the Back Bay Science Center, asking if they would be more research-oriented, geared towards upper-level grades, or more like what happens at the Muth Interpretive Center. That's the county facility where it's geared more towards K through six. And the naturalists seem to have a strong desire to see the programs being more research-oriented and geared towards upper-level grades. And they suggested the convening of a design team to determine and implement what's called the Teaching Lab. That's one of, that's one of four wings of the Back Bay Science Center, that Teaching Lab's interior design. And they note in their letter that they're having trouble securing donors to equip the Teaching Lab until some of these issues about who is being taught and who is being taught what are resolved. And finally, they asked a question if there is still any interest by the city and the Department of Fish and Game to co-manage the reserve, given what most agree are the Department of Fish and Game's limited resources. I'll talk a little bit about that. So, what about Fish and Game and the Upper Newport Bay Ecological Reserve? It's roughly seven hundred and fifty acres, and it consists of the water and the adjacent tidelands. Most of the slopes of the Upper Bay are owned by someone else. City owns them. The Irvine Company still holds title to some, and then the county holds title to a lot of them. But Fish and Game actually holds title to Shellmaker Island, and I made an error there at the, they don't actually hold title to the full reserve. The State Lands Commission holds title to that, but in effect, DFG is the manager of the reserve, but DFNG owns Shellmaker. And DFG assigns this staff to the reserve, forty percent of a reserve manager, and that person is supervised by the supervising biologist who is based in San Diego. They also have a full-time interpreter or educator who is actually grant-funded, and then one or two part-time scientific aides, depending on their budget. So, that's the entire staff of the Newport Bay Ecological Reserve from Fish and Game's perspective. And I think the naturalist's concern, and to some extent, staff's concern, is that forty percent number. That's a little bit low to have, to effectively manage all the biological questions that come up about Upper Newport Bay. And then I note, too, that about, gosh, it's probably been seven or eight years ago when Ross Johnson was our state senator, the city and Senator Johnson were instrumental in putting in place a $200,000 a year appropriation from the state general fund for Upper Newport Bay. And that was meant to assist Fish and Game with specific projects like restoration or dredging and education, not necessarily staffing.
Is that still ongoing?
It is. And I'll talk about that. Mr. Nichols?
You're really talking about like two positions now onsite, right?
Well, actually, I'm talking about, they have one point four positions, and then they're assisted at different times in the year if they have the budget with part-time scientific aides.
The point four is a teaching person that would be there when there's somebody to teach or something.
The point four is the managing individual.
Okay.
That's right. The educator is there full-time. That's Mr. Shaw.
But then, would it be two point four or one point four that you're talking about?
I haven't proposed anything here. I'm just telling you what's there now.
But this, this is DFG. This is Fish and Game. Are they going to have an onsite person there?
Why don't we let him finish his presentation, and he might tell us that?
Well, if he would, then that's fine.
Okay, I'll give it a try. Let me, a little bit more about Fish and Game in Upper Newport Bay. That reserve manager position has been vacant since July, and it will be filled in November or December. And Fish and Game in Sacramento has kind of an interesting and frustrating policy. It's that when a position becomes open, they hold it open for at least four months to get the salary savings associated with having that position open, regardless of the need in the reserve. So, we haven't had a reserve manager position since July. The interpreter actually retired and then came back part-time because literally no one was at Shellmaker.
Dave, question for you.
Ms. Daniel?
On the position with the education, the one point oh, what is the curriculum being taught, and how is that defined?
Generally, it's a curriculum associated with, it's driven by a grant that is focused on, it's known as the sport fishing grant. So, it tends to be on marine or underwater activities, and it's oriented towards kids. So, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. They also do some activities with scouting, as Mayor Webb knows and Mr. Rosansky knows. That's kind of the gearing of the current program.
Okay, now, are the naturalists going to supplement the curriculum there? Are they going to also be offering education programs?
I think... I think there's an interest on the naturalist's part in more actively participating in programs based on their own expertise, because as you know, there are a lot of naturalists, including some in the audience today, who are biology teachers and professors and have a, have a hankering to help out on things like this.
Okay.
Again, that position has been vacant since July. The interpreter is now back part-time. And to get to the question about that money, sometimes it's not spent. And this is another frustrating thing, I think, from the city's perspective, because we did work hard to get that general fund appropriation in there. And I'm not just saying it's not, it's not spent at all. They'll, they'll let the whole $2,000 revert back, sorry, $200,000 revert back to the State General Fund as savings that the state, State Fish and Game can point to as showing how frugal they are, yet this, this is set aside for a reason, and it's not being used. So a little bit of frustration there.
But the money's only for projects, not for people, right?
Generally not for people, yes. And I'm saying, I'm qualifying it because Fish and Game actually could go back and, and change some of the things that money is spent for if they wanted to. And they, they pushed the envelope a little bit, but so far, it hasn't gone towards staffing.
Do we have any right to request any of that money?
No, it's specifically dedicated to Fish and Game, although I suppose we could enter into some type of an agreement with them to be their contractor. That would be the way to do it.
Yeah, I was just thinking, if we had a project or a program that would be eligible that Department of Fish and Game wasn't planning on using the money for, then we could pick it up.
Yes, I think that's a possibility.
Mr. Dave, can I ask you a question? Could they have used a portion of that money then to hire the reserve manager position and not have it vacant for?
I think they would have had to change the, the actual language, because it is meant to go towards restoration and, and maintenance. It hasn't been interpreted to be as staffing, although as I say that, I think they tried to hire a scientific aide or two using that fund. I would point out that very generously, Fish and Game has agreed to take $150,000 of that, $150,000, and put it into the Back Bay Science Center's new aquarium system, which is a big chunk of change, and we're happy to see that happen. This is the first time, though, that that fund has been used. And it's, again, it's been in place probably seven years.
Weren't we going, weren't we going to do a lot of water testing and all this stuff? I thought this was supposed to be one of the big things we were doing in that center.
I think you're getting to the heart of the naturalist's concerns, that we do have the county's water quality lab in one of the four wings of the Back Bay Science Center. Remember, they're there now in a trailer. They'd move over to one wing, and then a separate wing would be the place where the county water quality lab workers, the biologists, would interact with an education program, potentially for high schoolers, community college, and with UCI.
Well, what I think is important to get out, Dave, is that are these people working in parallel out there? In other words, it's not just DFNG and the whole facility, and it's sitting vacant because no one's there? Or are, or do we have several different groups, and, and they're in different wings of the building? I mean, are we using this place, or is it just sitting vacant now that we built it?
Well, it's not done yet. It has, some of it's framing up. That's as far as it's, it's come. And, and I'll get to some of the recommendations I think we as staff wanted you to think about. And then finally, DFG is likely to have some budget for scientific aides this year, but it's year-to-year. They're told in July whether or not they'll have any scientific aides for the coming Let's talk a little bit about the programs, and this maybe gets to Mr. Nichols's question. There are various stakeholders that have different ideas about what to offer at the Back Bay Science Center. Is it a teaching lab for upper-level students, or is it a place for K through six students? Is it some combination of the two? Or is it a place where UCI, the Coastal Commission, the water quality lab technicians and biologists, Fish and Game, and volunteers could all participate in, in implementing an agreed-upon curriculum? And the way I wrote that, I think you can, I, I think a lot of the intent, as I read the Back Bay Science Center, was more towards D. Or maybe it's a combination of A, B, and D. But I think the intent of this, getting everybody in the same building, was to get everybody to cooperate. And the, we do have an operating agreement that your council approved, which is a tad vague. When I looked at it again, it says, "Education and interpretive programs for K through 12", but it also says for research and a resource for students and teachers of local schools and universities. And it talks about the city and the county providing water quality testing, education and awareness programs oriented towards middle school, high school, and college students. And then it talks about Fish and Game providing also educational programs and exhibits, displays, and teaching stations, more like what Fish and Game does today over there. So it's clearly a combination of things. So what should the city do, if anything? I, I want to try and convene a little teaching lab design team, and we'd hopefully facilitate agreement on the curriculum by determining what's already being done. We kind of know that, actually, but reviewing the operating agreement and, of course, getting everybody in the same room and then get everyone on the same page. And then I think we can start working with the naturalists on donor opportunities, because they're out there. I've heard from three or four people who are willing to commit significant funds to the Teaching Lab. And then continue the dialogue with Fish and Game. Plus, I think it's important for the city to think about whether the city would ever consider supporting Fish and Game to get a full-time reserve manager, or maybe either with Homer's idea or Councilmember Selich using that $200,000 to supplement that. And would the city or, or that 200K ever be used as a constant revenue stream to ensure that there is some continuity with those scientific aides? Because those are good folks in good positions. They're usually young university students who have a lot of enthusiasm for the job. So that's my presentation. I know there are some folks here from the naturalists. I will also note that I got a letter at about 5:00 from Fish and Game, and I can tell you parts of that if that issue comes up. They were kind of taking issue a little bit with the naturalist's letter, and I'll distribute that as well.
Okay. City council member, any questions?
What about just taking over the, the reserve from the Fishing Game? I mean, if we're going to pay for it and run it, why don't we just take it? Or not?
I, I think it would, it would require legislation plus a level of trust that we as a city don't have in the environmental community. And when, when we first even discussed this issue with Fish and Game and others, there was an immediate reaction, what does the city know about managing reserves?
But apparently, it's not being managed anyway.
I think that's what I said next.
Can we do worse than, than Fish and Game is doing?
I think, I think there is an idea where if the city was interested, we could enter into some type of collaboration to help them do the job they should be doing in, in Upper Newport Bay, and they seem willing to talk to us about that. That's something for us to talk about over the next months and look at budget and all those things that happen.
Sounds like they want to control it, but they don't want to pay for it.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's the nature of their situation. They're way down on the totem pole in terms of state funding, and whether that's a thing we could address with the legislate, our legislators or not, but, but you're right. They want to make sure their reserve is managed properly, even though they don't have the funds to do it.
Even though they don't want to manage it properly.
Why don't we get some input from those people in the audience, and then maybe we can discuss it a little bit further?
Mayor Webb, council members, Dennis Baker, Newport Bay Naturalists and Friends, and live in Corona del Mar. First of all, thank you, Councilmember Dale, for bringing this issue up at the last council meeting. We appreciate that. And I've been making notes as, as Mr. Kiff has been going over his presentation and also reflection of some of your questions, so maybe I can help a little bit there. The first thing is, is the letter's strong. There's, there's no doubt. I mean, you all have read the letter, I hope, and it's a very strong letter, and I think the reason that it is so strong is it demonstrates, it really is illustrative of our frustration at the naturalists, the board, or the naturalists and friends, because we've been working on this for many, many, many years. I've been involved with the naturalists since 2000, and it was going on when I came on board. So that's, that's a long time, although they spent 30 years over at Olsachica, so maybe it's not so long. The Newport Bay Naturalists and Friends, our focus is on restoration of the bay, protection of the bay, and also education. And that's the area we're, we're talking about here is the education. And so we have strong feelings about the direction that goes. We have a good program going on at the Moose Center for the younger children. We don't feel that there's a good program going on for the older students, such as high school students, although we have implemented a new program that is based on the California Coastal Commission's curriculum. And there was a question about that. The California Coastal Commission, when Christina Finsted was here working for them, and is now Matt Yurko has taken her place, and he administers that, full-time position, has an office in the Back Bay. They developed an extensive curriculum on the Upper Newport Bay. It's about this thick. It's available for download, no charge, teachers can use it. We brought out 150 students, just in one of the outreach, as I did, from Bell Gardens last year. Roger, our executive director, also brought us a school group from Pasadena that participated in that. This is aligned curriculum, and if you're not an educator, all that means is it ties in directly to state standards. So teachers like it because it's the checklist. You know, we, I did this, I did this, I did this. So we have that in place. That's already there. This is not something in Fish and Game's curriculum. They certainly can use it. It's public and available and paid for and delivered. Very good curriculum. The next thing is that the, there was a mention of the money, you know, a large amount of money going back, and that's extremely frustrating, because also, the California Coastal Commission, Matt Yurko, takes care of our restoration projects, and we don't, rather than duplicating that and having some of the Newport Bay Naturalists and Friends that takes care of restoration, Matt Yurko, California Coastal Commission, is our guy. He runs our program. He runs our roots programs and so on. He is doing restoration projects all over the bay. That money possibly could have been spent for that. I know that he would have loved to expand and done more projects. There's lots to do back there. All you have to do is go back and look at the pampas grass, and you know there's lots to do.
So has he approached them to get the money, or?
I don't know. I can't speak for them in that. In fact, like I said, these were notes I was taking as I was going through, and I heard that, and I went, well, of course, there's projects back there. So I, I don't know.
Were you aware of the money beforehand?
I wasn't.
Okay, thank you.
To be honest with you, council member, I probably had been made aware of it and, you know, didn't, didn't register. But it registered when I heard it just then.
Dennis, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
I appreciate your letter and that you sought us out to inform us of, of these issues that are going on. With any partnership, we need good dialogue, and I think, given the city's investment and interest in this project, you know, we have to continue to look at quality control issues. Where are you as far as the recommendations made by staff? Are you comfortable with those recommendations?
Yeah, actually, I am. I, I have to only speak from myself. I can't speak for the board, because the board's not privy to those recommendations. But for myself, yeah, I, I like the direction it goes. I, I actually don't think the board has any major complaints with the direction the city's been going. This is actually a longtime frustration, you know, that we've been dealing with. And so, so far, yeah, I, I'm okay with what was presented.
Do, do you agree with Dave's assessment that there's just a lack of trust in the environmental community towards the city to be able to manage a program like that?
Towards the city.
And why is that?
And I think, I think that's been, I think that's been evidenced by some of the reactions to some of the proposals that were in the past, and I, and maybe actually even, I know there's some people here that may speak to, to that issue, but there's, there's a historic suspicion based upon events that have happened before this council was around and so on. It has to do with the Irvine Company. I mean, you know, there's no, there's no use dodging around it, you know, especially old timers that were in the, in the big fight, you know, the big fight to preserve the bay and not have it be developed and so on. They still have, and I think, a very justifiable paranoia about the Irvine Company. I mean, even when it comes up to a sign, and I don't know if you're privy, but I mean, there was people, there were people that were very upset that the Irvine Company's name might, or the Irvine Ranch Conserv, Land Trust, thank you, that their name was going to be, their logo or something was going to be on a sign marking a trail, that somehow that was going to be an encroachment. You know, I personally am going like, okay, I kind of would worry about bigger things, but that's, that doesn't matter. That's the reality. That's what they, they believe. So yes, absolutely, there is a suspicion. If you, your proposal, me personally, I'd say go for it. I'd love the city to just take this over and say, adios, DFG. And actually, I got a, I've got a comment on it in a second, but from the standpoint of our general membership, they would go, city is making a deal, you know, the city's making, they're making, they're in bed with the Irvine Company.
Who do they recommend run?
It's the cabal.
Other than themselves, who do they recommend run that?
Actually, there are many people who have conveyed the feeling that, let's leave it the way it is. Let's not mess with it.
So they like benign neglect?
Yeah, but I, but I also think those are not the same people that have to de, deal with the day in, day out with the issues that were happening on Shellmaker and the interaction with DFG. And one of the things that, a little bit more on your, your suggestion, DFG will have a presence in the Upper Newport Bay no matter what, because DFG is charged by the state of California for enforcement of environmental laws and environmental protection for endangered species and so on, which we have a lot. So tomorrow, we could say, okay, DFG's not managing it, so therefore they're not there. They still have a presence, they're in enforcement, and they're going to still be in there making up rules, laws, and saying who can go where, even if they're not, even if they were not managing it. So we are in no position to say DFG would ever be out of there. What we actually want to do, and we keep falling back to this, we try and keep it on this positive note, because what we want to do is we want DFG to be successful. We really do. I mean, a lot of people say, you guys are always banging heads with DFG, but we would like DFG to be successful. Our frustration is when we try and do things to make them successful, not only do we sometimes get stonewalled, but we actually kind of get our hands slapped and so on. There was a mention of sci-ades, scientific aids. He didn't mention it. We pay for the scientific aids. The Newport Bay Naturalists and Friends raised money and paid the salary of the scientific aides that worked on Shellmaker Island directly reporting to DFG. We had no control over them. All we did was give the money to pay their salary. And so when you do that, and then you turn around and you get shut out and ignored and told you have nothing to do here, oh, but please write the check, then that's where our frustration sometimes would come from. And this, you know, that's one little issue of just a, a long list of them that kind of rose us to this, to kind of write our angry letter to you. So I don't want to take all the time, because I know other people have things to say.
Okay, I think that's a good idea, because we only have about another 10 minutes.
Right.
And is there somebody else that would like to speak?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lori Keiser, and I'm the chair of the Sierra Club Task Force for Upper Newport Bay. I'm also a board member for Friends of Harper's Beaches and Parks, and I'm a naturalist. And the first thing I want to say is I really want to compliment you for bringing this to a public forum so that people can chime in, and, and I really appreciate that. The second thing is that I really appreciate the collaborative spirit that was mentioned as Mr. Kiff went through his presentation. I do think that the collaborative approach is a necessary one, and so I do appreciate that, and I think that collaborative approach would help build trust in the city and, and your interest in truly managing the bay for the best interests of the bay. And the only other thing that I would like to mention is the educational programs. The, I actually lead tours up at the Moose Center, and it's actually only K through three. So the fourth through sixth grade programs that are offered at Shellmaker, those are outreach efforts to the kids in Buena Park and other underserved areas, and those are extremely critical. A lot of times, those programs are the only exposure these kids get to the ocean and to what's happening to our water. So those are extremely critical. I actually know a Buena Park school teacher who I'm sure would be happy to, to talk with anybody about the importance of that program to those schoolchildren.
Thank you.
All right? Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak?
I'm one of those old timers. I'm Ray Williams. I sat up there from 1976 to 80. I live in Lake Arrowhead now and still come down here to help save the bay. And I started doing this in 1969, so I was in some of the fight. And now I'm also a volunteer. I'm also a professor of biology at Rio Grande College, although I'm part-time now. I'm in my 52nd year of teaching, I think it is. A lot of good things have been said here today, and I hope I can add a little bit. I'm one of the ones that made a lot of noise back in January. You were there, and we were expressing distrust because of things in the past. And in the months since that time, I've come to start seeing things in a better way and to answer something that just got mentioned about, you know, couldn't, couldn't the city just take over ownership? I don't really think it's necessary. It actually isn't owned by Fish and Game. It's owned by the State Lands Commission. But it wouldn't be too bad, maybe, if the city managed it. Fish and Game would still have to, to work on the laws that have to do with protecting endangered species and all that, so they, they would be there. But to actually do the, the management of the, the resource and to do the education kinds of things, that, the city might not be too bad. But what I want to do is read a thing that I've written now twice. But what I want to do is read a thing that I've written now twice to say my thing. And if you want to ask me some questions, that's fine. As you are quite aware, the city has more money in the Back Bay Science Center project than anybody else by a considerable margin. So you guys really ought to be interested in what's going on back there. And one would think you'd want knowledgeable people operating a top-notch facility. I think what we need the most in the resource is a modern, up-to-date Department of Fish and Game employee at the bay who combines an ability to organize and manage a proper outdoor education program, a friendly cooperative approach toward the other agencies involved and toward fellow workers, be they paid or volunteer. This person would also be a good public relations person and who has modern laboratory-based biological knowledge as related to the Upper Newport Bay Ecological Reserve. We are not close to that. When I was in college, I majored in wildlife management, which was supposed to lead me into a career with the Department of Fish and Game. I went to San Jose State. I worked for the department twice for short-term things. My major professor told us in class that a lot of people who go into Department of Fish and Game work do that so they don't have to be around people. And he said, this was 50 years ago, he said, that's wrong. It's even more wrong today. And the department has a different direction now than it had in the past. All over the country, including California, fishing and hunting are declining as an activity. This is based on sales of licenses in each area. And what the department is charged with doing has broadened. They're now dealing with endangered species, non-game species, if you will. And they're dealing with nature as people have become more interested in nature. So the department has had its assignment broadened. But the training system that people go through to go to work for the department hasn't necessarily broadened as fast as the public interest has. And we've been seeing the difference, you know, the department hasn't caught up with this, but we've been seeing this at the bay with many well-trained and knowledgeable volunteer educators knowing more about what they are teaching than Fish and Game department people do. But the Department of Fish and Game people know they are in charge and continue to insist on doing things their way in spite of this. And you need to know, of course, that there's a host of volunteers out there, you know, that have been doing things, are ready to do more to make this whole place function like we think it should. And I'm saying this for myself. I don't represent the board of our group or anything, so I'm just saying this is me. But I know Rita Phillips, who's in the room with me, that we, the two of us would certainly ask the council to be active participants in getting all this to happen right.
How much more do you have, Ray?
About that much. It's about a minute. It will likely be necessary in the near future for city reps to pay a visit to Ryan Broderick, the head of the Fish and Game Department, in order to try to get this all moving. I know it happened a year or so ago, but nothing has taken place as a result. He's in Sacramento. Some of it has to do with hiring the right people. I understand the city has indicated an interest in maybe supporting that. And I know Rita's here, she'll probably say some things, too. But we're standing ready to help in any way we can. We'd go to Sacramento with you if it had to help. And we, and several other volunteers, each with their own expertise, have invested hundreds of hours over many months and have learned a great deal about the slow pace of bureaucracy. Now we're asking for your help.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
We have time for about one more person.
My name is Erwin Haydock. I'm a resident of Orange County, a little bit east of here. But I just wanted to say, I've been appointed to, as a scientific advisor for the Upper Newport Bay Naturalists and Friends. I have about 30-some-odd years of experience in marine sciences. Todd and I know one another quite well. I've been working with them. I'm sort of the new kid on the block, but I'm also the oldest guy in town because I was back there in 69 when they were going to develop Bolsa Chica and Newport Bay. So I know all the plans that have gone on. What I wanted to say today is I went to California World's Oceans Conference a few weeks ago in Long Beach, and they're going to have a campaign this year called, "Thank You Ocean." And as a result of that, I went to some of the educational meetings. I'm not an educator, I'm a scientist. But in those educational meetings, I got reacquainted with some friends in the aquarium and museum business, and I got all excited. I'm kind of a pessimist about the way we're killing our ocean, but I got kind of excited about starting a new educational program that would involve Washington, Oregon, and California. And that was the intent of the conference, was to spread this out. If we don't all hang together, we'll all hang separately. And I really think that this is a chance to have a cooperative program. I agree with what's been said about the fact that, I agree with some of the things that have been said about the fact that Newport would be well, this Back Bay Science Center would be well-served by the leadership that Newport could provide. And I think you should try and do that as much as possible. But I believe that if we don't all cooperate, well, we won't get a good program. Now, I'm looking forward to providing all the input I can on the Science Center and on the educational programs. And I would just say that that's one of the most important things you could do, to be a part of this coast-wide activity that trains the future people in this county to do the right thing with respect to the ocean, the bays, and the estuaries, and the watershed itself. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
I just want to say, Erwin, thank you for speaking tonight. It's nice to hear you coming here with a positive approach. With your credentials, you've written some books. I would urge you to stay involved and get into the education component. I don't think the sky is falling. I don't think the ocean is being ruined. And you and I've had many discussions about that, but this is a great opportunity for you, and I encourage you to continue because your credentials speak for themselves.
Thank you, Todd. And I also don't believe that you should be painted with the same brush as the Irvine Company. I think the Irvine Company's come a long way, and I think they really want to do the right thing, too. And I think we need to show people that we all are part of this, and we're all part of the solution. And if we do that, I think everyone will look favorably upon all of us. Thank you.
One more. One more gentleman, excuse me.
Mayor Webb, council members. My name is Roger Mallett. I'm the part-time executive director of the Newport Bay Naturalists and Friends. I've been a naturalist since 1999, served on the board. I've been chair of the Education Committee since 2000. I think I'm closer to the problems than most people in that I facilitated the development of a comprehensive cooperative policy for the Management Coalition, which is comprised of County Harpers, Beaches, and Parks, DFG, the city, the healthcare agency, California Coastal Commission, UCI, and ourselves, and also the education team underneath that. Part of what we did was develop a comprehensive matrix showing which grades should be taught at which facility so we don't compete between the Back Bay Science Center and the Moose Center, and we don't compete with plenty of other programs that take place around Upper Newport Bay. I was also responsible for the conceptual design of the Back Bay Science Center as it's now being constructed. That's the scaled-down version. I believe that we can achieve a world-class facility here. I believe that we should be going back and looking at the original mission statement of the facility, which is a research-based facility. And I'll read, "A state-of-the-art water quality laboratory and a marine ecology laboratory designed to allow junior and senior high school and college students to work side-by-side with some of the region's top scientists." I think that was the vision that we all had when we went into this. Unfortunately, that's different from DFG's core mission. This type of facility is new to them. Their core mission is resource management. They don't have the resources or the personnel to conduct the type of operation needed here. And I believe that the Director of Fish and Game realizes that and conveyed that to the city last September or August when discussing, you know, the possibility of the city taking on a much deeper role here. The problem is that the regional and local level, there's been a reluctance to accept assistance in developing this facility, I think for fear of loss of control. And that control mindset comes from the history and the culture of DFG as an enforcement agency. I think that DFG can be successful here. They've proven up at El Con Slu that they can work in a cooperative spirit with other agencies and with nonprofits. I think that the city has an investment here that they need to protect. I think the city's interested in seeing that collaborative effort take place here where we can use the resources of UCI and the healthcare agency to make the Back Bay Science Center teaching labs really, you know, what they should be. And I'd like to see the city, you know, take a really positive approach in reapproaching the Director of Fish and Game to make sure that we can get a full-time reserve manager here with the right credentials and the right approach such that we can make things happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Does the council have any other questions related to this item?
I'd just say that it seems like Dave's approach to trying to convene the players here and get them all in one room kind of makes sense, and I would support that.
We're all on the same page. And I actually think DFG can be on the same page with us. I don't know if it's, you know, when you convene the brain power and the expertise that's in the room today and all the people who've been involved in this project, I think there's got to be a way to come together and create a research and educational facility alongside with the Resource Agency. Dave, you're doing a great job, and I'm just giving you an attaboy. Keep it up, boy. And I'm glad to see I at least heard one person softening a little bit on the Irvine Company. I feel that they are still a resource that is very valuable to us. I attended the Irvine Ranch Natural National Landmark dedication where 37,000 acres was dedicated as a national natural landmark. They have a total of 50,000 acres within the county. And I think that there are $50 million that are going into a program to maintain those facilities over the years. And if this were a part of that, I think that we might also have an additional resource that we could take advantage of in the bay. Thank you very much. Is there any general public comments on non-agenda items? Then we will adjourn to a closed session.